Clearly, it's seven o'clock. We need to get this meeting going. Yep. So yes, the time is officially seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order. Would you kindly do a roll call?
Counselor Williams, Counselor Hansi,
Yes.
Counselor Perser,
Here.
Counselor Parrish,
Here.
Counselor Stolarczyk,
Here.
Counselor Miller,
Present.
Great, thank you. I ask that everybody stand. We're gonna take a moment of silence and then do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America. In the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda set forth before us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Great. Can we get a motion to adopt?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second, you have a first and second. Would you kindly poll?
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Stolarczyk.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have Proclamations and Presentations. And our first proclamation is proclaiming July 2024 as Parks and Recreation, Recreation Month. Andrea, would you care to read the proclamation?
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Fruta. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Fruta recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, we, the Fruta City Council, hereby proclaim the month of July 2024 as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Fruta.
Great. I don't see Mark.
Yeah, Mark is working with Major League Baseball for part of this week and will be back soon. He does that every year. But we do have Molly, Tina, Hannah, and Sean from our Parks and Recreation Department. So I don't know if Mark told you, but we usually invite you up to accept the answer. Maybe if someone wants to say something, you don't have to, but thank you.
They have to take a picture.
But you do have to take a picture with the council.
Would anybody like to speak before we just jump straight to picture? What's your?
Throws everything.
Thank you all for being here.
Like, I don't know.
I apologize. We had just come from a tour. Normally, I didn't have my normal time to prep, so I apologize. All right. So next on the agenda, we have a proclamation recognizing the importance of practicing civility on council. And this is something as a council, we pretty much, well, we already followed ahead of time. You see a lot of cities now trying to incorporate this. We were already there. But we, as council, thought it would be good to make sure to reaffirm our belief in the civility. And therefore, unlike most proclamations, we're all going to sign this as kind of our pledge towards civility. And I believe there'll be a copy of it posted downstairs or outside the room.
Both levels.
Okay. Great. So this is gonna be a little different. We haven't rehearsed this, so bear with us. We're gonna start with Amy and then we're gonna take turns reading it. Kind of coming down that way. James will decide if he wants to read one or two paragraphs. We'll bring it back and then we're all gonna read the end together. So Amy, if you would kind of kick us off.
Yes, sir. Whereas civility is the steadfast practice of respect, even in disagreement, that fosters constructive dialogue and connection, recognizing the inherent dignity of every person. And whereas building a strong and united community with effective governance requires respectful dialogue and collaboration. And
Whereas the city of Fruta prioritizes civility in all aspects of municipal work by practicing conduct that aligns with the city of Fruta's city charter, core values, norms of conduct, code of ethics, annual inclusivity proclamation, and the Fruta City Council handbook. And
Whereas these practices shed light on the importance of respecting municipal government as nonpartisan, how individuals have different learning styles and backgrounds, and how the city of Fruta prioritizes transparency, respect, inclusivity, and collaboration. And
Whereas the Fruta City Council understands and recognizes the special role they are in and how modeling open, free, and respectful debate is an important part of maintaining public trust and representing the community. And
Whereas the city, Fruta City Council pledges to listen actively and openly, promote respectful debate, value collaboration, treat all with respect, model constructive leadership, and hold themselves accountable. And
Whereas the Fruta City Council expects residents to participate in local government with these values in mind. And whereas the Fruta City Council acknowledges managing a city involves considerable effort and collaboration and is inevitable that disagreements will arise among council members, staff, and the public. While it's natural to feel passionate and sometimes even frustrated during these discussions, we must remember that threats either direct or indirect against anyone, whether a council member, a city employee, or a member of our staff, are absolutely unacceptable and will not be tolerated. Our zero tolerance policy for such behavior is strict. Any incidents will be thoroughly documented and, if warranted, prosecuted. And
Whereas in Fruta, we are committed to upholding our core values, being tough on the issues while maintaining kindness toward people. We strive to resolve challenges fairly and effectively, no matter how daunting they may seem. It's important to remember that we must work together, respecting each difference of opinion, as an opportunity to work together and strengthen our community. And
Whereas in order to publicly declare its commitment to civility, the Fruta City Council has determined to adopt this proclamation. Now,
The proposal is resolved by the City Council of the city of Fruta. That Fruta City Council recognizes the importance of practicing civility in all areas of local government and strives to be role models of civility and action, but will also help community members practice civility to ensure healthy discourse to support the Fruta community into the future.
Thank you all. As you can tell, not rehearsed. All right. So we will take turns signing that and then get that up there. So once again, thank you. So next, we're gonna open it up to public participation. This section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issues and will not take an official action under this section of the agenda. We ask that you please limit your comments to a three-minute period. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? Come on up. Eric, could you, oh, you got it?
Got it.
Sorry, James.
Oh, I've been waiting for my moment.
So if you could kindly come up to the mic and state your name and your address for the record, we'd be greatly appreciative.
Hi, my name is Dina Norris. My address is 1185 Seventeen and a Half Road in Fruta. I'm extremely nervous. But I'm really glad that you read that proclamation of civility because I'm here tonight with thirty-seven grievances against the city. I'm really not, so. I'm here tonight to ask for an exploratory committee for a community garden for the city of Fruta. Over the last few months, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about having that space, especially as other areas are being looked at, not only for development, but also for things for recreation like pickleball courts. I don't disagree that everything has merit in this city. But I do think that in the situation we're currently in, where we continue to see less jobs available that pay a wage that people can afford to buy homes with, and inflation that's driving the cost of food through the roof for most families, as it does mine and yours, I'm sure, that we do need to bridge the gap in some way. All I'm asking for is to start the conversation at this point. I know that this has been a conversation in the past. I know that there's been a couple of times that we've tried for a smaller area, that we've tried for grants in order to make this happen, and they've fallen through. I don't think it's fair to continue to let that fall through. I think that this is a green space that contributes to the mental and physical health of everybody in this community. I think it's food security for some families that can't afford to buy produce. And I don't think it's something that we should let slip by any further. I'm happy to email you some resources that I have found that are basically examples of really great community gardens that have benefited different communities across the nation. They're done in different formats where people can have their own plots, or they can work in a CSA format and donate some back to the community. I just don't see a reason, as we continue to develop in Fruta, that we wouldn't consider something that would add a beautiful space as well as a community resource. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kindly, you talked about emailing resources. Could you kindly email those to Mike and then Mike can distribute that? Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come on? It went well last time, so you're, you could kindly state your name and address for the record.
I'm Tessa Bynum. I live at 255 North Ash Street in Fruta. Tonight, I'd like to thank you all for hearing my requests in June. I'm at the meeting that I was here for. I also I know what you guys are gonna do with the information that was collected. So while I was here at that meeting, a council member commented on a report that was being presented and stated that citizens in Fruta were whiny, followed by laughter by many of you, if not all of you. And I would like to remind you that these whiny citizens are the ones that elected you to represent them. And I would like to, I would like to, like, point out that you guys just signed a proclamation about inclusivity and respect. And I want you I want to remind you that you guys are held to a higher standard of respect and dignity. And I want you to reread your code of conduct that is presented in your handbook. Because at the end of that meeting, I didn't feel represented by any of you. So while waiting for the results of that traffic study to be published online, I noticed that the 2023 Pacer scores hadn't been published. I have had email communications with three city employees with very few of my direct questions being answered. One response was a mansplained answer, saying that Fruta uses PCI now instead. And the other one said that they would happily give me the data of one street of my request, but not all of the streets. We paid sixty-three thousand four hundred dollars for those results. Why is the data not published? At many of the city meetings of city council, there is light discourse about the verbiage used in ordinances, but still there is no evidence that you use that, the time that you guys have together to ensure that your plans are consistent and accurate. On page sixteen of the Fruta Circulation Plan, it says that Fruta will pay to repair the sidewalks that are a safety hazard. But on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine, it says that residents are responsible unless they ask the city to split the costs. The issue with that is that at the administration desk downstairs, I was told to talk to Public Works. At Public Works, I was told by two employees to speak to somebody at the Civic Center. Back here, I was told that there was a form online. Guess what? There's not. So there's a resource that's available, that's been available for at least three years. And the program has a budget of a hundred thousand dollars this year and last year. And there's not a way to access it. And there's no statistics on how many people have accessed it. And there are sidewalks that are in deplorable condition. So I would like to know what you're gonna do about that as well. Everyone, citizens and the council alike, must be accountable for the expectations that everyone has for each other. So I'll just be here waiting for more transparency, better representation, and more thorough processes. Thank you.
Thank you. We make sure we've got contact information?
We do.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? All right, hearing none. Going to go ahead and close public participation. Next, we have the consent agenda. These are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before the council for final action. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council. Members of the council may ask that an item be removed from the consented consent section and fully discussed. All items not removed from the consent section will then be approved. A member of council may vote no on specific items without asking that they be removed from the consent section for full discussion. Any items that, any item that is removed from the consent agenda will be placed at the end of the consent agenda for further discussion. So are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No changes to the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to discuss anything that's on the consent agenda? Any items, changes? All right, hearing none. Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as before us.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Counselor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need to open it up for public comment.
Thank you. I think by now I'd have that. We've, because the consent agenda is presented. Is there anybody that would like to comment on anything, any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna pull that back to council. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to pull off of consent and discuss? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve the consent agenda as before us, please.
All right, we have a first and a second. Would you kindly poll?
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Stolarczyk.
Yes.
Counselor Miller and Counselor Williams. Motion passes six zero.
Before we move on to the next section, we'd like to acknowledge two people that took the time and effort and came in and interviewed for the Arts and Council Board. So Andrew, I'm gonna butcher this last name, Schleckin, thank you, and Megan, thank you, Wrecker, have both been appointed to the Arts and Council Board. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve our community. It's greatly appreciated and welcome aboard. All right, we have nothing on the public hearings tonight. So we're gonna move into our administrative agenda. And we're gonna introduce our brand-new finance director, Shannon, Assistant City Manager. You have the floor.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the opportunity to present tonight. As with any new department director, we usually give them time during the administrative agenda to introduce themselves to the council and for the council to ask any questions of the new department head. As all of you know, and as we just celebrated a few weeks ago, our finance director and city clerk, Margaret Sell, has retired or is in the process of retiring from the city of Fruta after forty-one years here with the city, starting off as a part-time clerk, taking minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission forty-one years ago, all the way up to Finance Director until July of this year. With this in mind, city council approved some overlap in between Margaret's retirement, or when she was going to retire, and the new finance director to allow for plenty of time of training. And after three rounds of recruitment, three openings, we were finally able to get a very good pool of applicants and we narrowed that down and offered that position to Joe Zaire, who's here with me tonight. So we're very excited to have Joe on board. He's been with us for three and a half weeks. He got two full weeks with Margaret. They were not long enough, but she is coming back in August, so we're very excited to see her again next month. But in the meantime, she will be available for him, but just wanted to turn over to him to introduce himself and, of course, answer any questions from the city council. So Joe, you're up.
Shannon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Joe Zaire. I come to you direct from Boise, Idaho, where my wife and my two dogs are still waiting for me. Hopefully, they'll be here soon. At any rate, I just wanna thank those who were involved in the selection committee. And as I told them in the interview, you made the right choice if you picked me. But that being aside, Shannon told me to be brief and not to use foul language. I'm gonna do my best. So my history is in public service in general. Eight years in the United States Air Force, five years as a wildland firefighter with the Forest Service and the National Park Service. Another fourteen years now, I think, in governmental accounting at the state and the city level. My last position in Boise was with the Idaho Commission on Aging. Thirty-four million dollar a year budget outreach to the entire state through area agencies, working with a number of federal grants. Prior to that, I was with the city in the Budget Office for the city of Boise. And then in the Budget Office for the Idaho Department of Corrections, two-hundred-million-dollar budget, two thousand employees, managing that, and the list goes on. I have, oh, gosh. But I guess the best thing is, like, I have a degree in philosophy and I have a degree in accounting. And so you have, like, a guy who uses both sides of the brain. I also finished my master's degree in governmental accounting specifically a couple of years ago. And so I am glad to be in a position now to put all that knowledge to work. And so far, my welcome here has been absolutely outstanding, and I thank you and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Joe.
Questions? Good. Thanks. What type of dogs?
Oh.
These are hard-hitting.
Best kind, rescues, of course. Hero, who is my wife's dog, is a Malinois pity mix. And then Roki the Pirate, who is my dog, he is a pity lab mix.
All dogs.
All dogs.
Oh, man, yeah, they are great. Yeah, they're just a couple of big cuddle bugs.
Look forward to meeting them.
Thank you.
And the wife.
And the wife as well. Sorry, yeah.
And talking, sorry, talking to council member Hansi, apparently, you must be the cool guy with the daughter at Duke. And my wife is a duque long, so she would be glad to meet you.
We're glad you're here. Yes, thank you for coming.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
I'm not talking to you either, fake sourdough lady. That was not the Dina I know.
Mike, I think it's time for the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just a reminder that tomorrow night, we have the Nineteen Road Open House about the Nineteen Road Project here at 6:00 PM. And then I wanted to highlight that Matt Carson has spent spent some time cleaning up visibility of tree limbs and working with property owners at just over twenty intersections since we last talked about that. And continuing to work on that paper and peach. We've done some, some, some work on similar with the trimmings. And then we're trying to work on a way to make sure that the parking isn't taking some of the visibility. And then we are working with SGM, our contracted engineering firm, to create some Fruta-specific criteria to evaluate intersections because as we've talked about in the past, if you use the MUTCD standards, the standards across the board, we have very little stop signs or crosswalks throughout the whole community. So adapting it to some criteria that we can put forward, not just for paper and peach, this is for all of our intersections. We have a similar format for crosswalks, so we're having them create that criteria for us to do those internal reviews. And then upcoming workshops that we have that I wanted to highlight, just so you have an idea of what's coming up. At the July workshop, we have a discussion on the Creative Arts District, an overview from Josh Blanchard, the Executive Director of the Colorado Creative Industries, and then Brandon Stam, who's the Executive Director at Downtown Grand Junction. That'll be the first item. And then we have a discussion on various land use code amendments that you had given us, the council had given us direction on, bringing some discussion for, and that's for conditional use permits, call-ups, appeals, and sign code. So just the initial discussion on those two coming up a week from today. And then the August workshop is a full slate with two items, but the first is a discussion with the municipal judge and the police chief, possibly the prosecutor regarding updates to the municipal code and aligning our, some of our violations with the state law. So having that discussion. And then we'll spend quite a bit of time on the capital improvement plan overview that we have at five and even for certain categories up to ten years. So that's what's coming up, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. All right, next, we're gonna bring it back to council. And first on the list is a CML conference recap. So three weeks ago, it's kind of going by quickly. A number of us had a chance to go to CML, Colorado Municipal League Conference, held in Loveland. It's three days, it's workshops, it's interacting with other municipal leaders. It's a lot of education, it's a lot of networking. So we wanted to save a little bit of time so we could share some of what our takeaways were at CML. So this has not been orchestrated who's gonna go first. But if anybody would like to volunteer on council, kind of discuss their experience at CML? If not, I'm happy to go first.
I'll be happy to go first, seeing as this was my first conference. It was very informative. Bit of eyes wide open and not really understanding everything that's going on, but there were some very good sessions. Some that were not as good. But we learned, second day, some great things that I think will be applicable here in Fruta. And I was very appreciative of the opportunity to be there, not only to learn all of those things, but to be with my fellow council members and to get to know you each a little bit better.
Great. Anybody else want to go?
I was only there for a short time, as you guys know. And I always love being there with it's a good opportunity to get to know one another a little bit better. I, the biggest value I always take from it is the conversations with other municipalities, like more one-on-one sessions are good, but hearing about how things are going in other places and how they're approaching certain things and what their wins are or what their challenges might be. I always really appreciate that. I will say I was disappointed in the sessions that I attended that first day, but I hear that they got better the next day, so that's good.
Definitely. In my opinion, they definitely got stronger after the first day.
Good.
Well, how, what kind of detail do we want to go into?
Takeaways?
Um, okay. I, as already said, the first day was a little bit of a struggle, but the second day went really well. We, we, this time around, we all pretty much stayed, not in sessions, but like just after, like getting team building, we really kind of spent a lot more time together, and I always find that super valuable. The sessions, there was, there was quite a bit to glean off of, I feel like, on that second day. Rich and I took, and Shannon, took a park tour that they have there in Loveland and I just, as an example, could see us implementing some of that, like in the launch of development, incorporating artists and sculptures. And it was, that experience alone was really fantastic.
There was a difference in whole last year at the, I snuck into the mayor's mingle. And that was a lot of, you know, how do you deal with you know, how do you deal with council members that don't read their packet? And it, the number one answer was humiliate them in public. And this year, there was definitely a difference of tone, which is how do you create civility? How do you work together? I mean, it was night and day, the difference from last year to this year. How do you work together with difficult members of council? How do you encourage them? How do you become more cohesive was a big part of it. I also got the chance to talk to some mayors and other former mayors and was able to ask like, what's the one thing you wish you could have done? What's your biggest mistake and what were some of the greatest ideas? And I think in some of that, there's some really good ideas that we can discuss at future workshops, things like, you know, it doesn't, isn't worthwhile to have a city foundation where people can kind of contribute to very specific items and have a kind of a nonprofit sector to kind of work through that. That was a big one. Affordable housing was, I thought, interesting and there were other people there. It wasn't what I was expecting. It was, it was led as, you know, here's how you build community consensus. And it was really about the project. And then when the question was asked about how was the community involved? And it was, oh, they weren't behind this at all, 100% at all. And that was a bit misleading, but then talking to others, it was really, every community seemed to want to really tackle the affordable housing, but nobody wanted it in their community. And it was interesting to kind of see that dynamic and nobody had a great answer for it. I just, we are further ahead on that curve than most communities, but it's that struggle of not in my backyard and kind of how talking to other municipal leaders, how they're trying to navigate that. Nobody has a great answer. We're all kind of working together and trying to figure this out. So those are probably my biggest takeaways. And I thought it was interesting that they had a session I didn't go to on pickleball. It was about the challenges and legal issues around pickleball. There's a whole session about that and noises and issue.
I'm sad nobody made it to it. I was actually curious about that one.
Conflict with something.
Yeah.
I want to piggyback real quick. I did go to a session that Jeff Coe put on Jefferson County about getting the community, actually, it was about getting the community on board with affordable housing. And we all had had a discussion at dinner the night before about telling stories of people who need such housing. And then in that session, that was one of their main things that they talked about. Is telling, making it personal to people and, and it was very well received in that community by doing that. So just something you might want to think about.
That's great. Thank you.
I didn't really have much to add. I, if like you guys, I really liked the time to just kind of spend with you guys and get to know each other and kind of see people and, you know, see each other in a different light. And I really enjoyed that part of it. I just thought it was really understated this year. I think we all kind of did. And the second day definitely was better. The, the, there was one that we, that Janine and I went to, and I really liked that team that they were doing funding for like historical housing and different things. And we had asked, and I asked her about events and if she was going to do, thinking of Fall Fest, because they were, they do like historic events that go forever. So I was really excited to get her information and get it to Kayla, because I know Kayla's always looking for funding sources. So I thought that was really cool. And I just liked the way they carried themselves. They were very excited. And I think the only, my main positive thing that I took from that is I did notice this year that there were some younger people participating on a municipal level. And the excitement that they were bringing to the table was, wasn't there before. And I think that, that, that was nice to see that. And it'd be interesting to see if that's a continuing trend. But you could see some excitement and some intelligent ideas that were coming from some younger people that I thought kind of freshened things up. And I really liked that a lot.
Like the one had the photo of her great, like her official photo was her graduation.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing I like, and I know you guys don't get as excited about this, but like municipal finance and those conversations, I thought were good in terms of as we look forward into capital improvement projects and kind of how to, what to do in terms of how we time those and how they get financed, I thought was very worthwhile. I'll share spreadsheets with all of you.
Shannon like to contribute?
Yeah, Shannon.
Yeah, well, yeah, thank you. Yeah, some of the sessions that staff goes to are probably not as exciting as some of the other ones. James can vouch for this with me as well, because we went to one session, what's new at DOLA in Aurora last year. And you actually had to step out of that one. It's, it's a lot about, you know, laws that are implemented, you know, at the State House. Also went to several sections, sessions on like upcoming changes, you know, to property tax. There are several measures that are being considered for the November ballot. This year, we just had one last year, as we all remember, that failed in November. And then the CARA legislature got back with special session and then decided to basically do all those same things anyway. And then implemented just differently after that. So a lot of what's new at the Capitol, what happened, what grant opportunities are available. But yeah, to echo a few things I did with councillor Purser, I thought the Benson Sculpture Gardens was such a cool park. They have 200 sculptures that have been donated over the past 60 years, I want to say, 50 years? Oh yeah, because we actually had one of the original artists come and he was the first sculpture in the Benson Sculpture Garden. He was able to come and give a tour to one of the groups. So that was really cool. And yeah, the discussion on housing and how to really communicate the need for housing from Jefferson County, I thought was also really interesting. Because they talk a lot about, you know, you hear these terms like missing middle and affordable housing, workforce housing. It's like those don't maybe play as well as we all think. So we need to start thinking about how do we tell the story of the people who are actually use this, use, you know, these houses that will move into the Fruta Muse, move into some of these other things, because it's never been there before. So it's a lot about storytelling and how can we really capture that and kind of share our message as a city and as a community. So I thought that one was super interesting. The next morning, I actually went to the manager's breakfast and they said, the missing middle. So there's a disconnect between the managers and the people and communications, but that's fair. I will defer to them. At a best market things, but yeah, overall, I thought it was a great one. And yeah, Loveland was, Loveland was very nice. Thanks for going to Capital Tacos. That was, that was awesome.
I thought it was funny that Mike, Mike wasn't there, which usually it's like being in city market with my wife and everyone stops you everywhere. When Mike's there, it, there was no drop off with Shannon. And Shannon was just as new every single person. We couldn't make it five feet.
Disappearing though.
Well, they kept grabbing him and taking him. But no, you guys, they were, it was great to have, you guys always do a good job. And I, I just felt like we were represented really well, like Fruta always kind of looks good there. So I liked it.
Anybody have anything else that they'd like to wrap it up with? All I'll say is I've learned there's a strange fascination with tacos. Don't. Overly excessive.
We're really good.
There's a huge thing with tacos. I'm getting there. All right. Moving on to council reports and action items. James, we'll start with you and work this way.
Nothing big for me too. I got the police commission finally happens tomorrow. So I'm, I'm actually excited to go to that. And on the dog topic, me and my dog park pushing all the time. I went to, I got to take Brittany to the Junction Dog Park. And I don't know when they did it, but they upped us and they have wood chips and it's a million times better. So I'm going to go ahead and throw back out my wood chipper idea, especially with Matt doing all this stuff that he's been dealing with the trees and stuff too. I think that would help, but I, it's, you guys got to go see the difference that the wood chips do at that dog park. It's, it's night and day. Yeah. And also like, and I was talking about it too before that, I can't remember where we found out they were doing this, but they do days where people in the community bring in their, their limbs and all their extra cutting and stuff. And then they use that. And then that, so it does the double purpose. But again, I'm going to keep pushing for that.
Really careful with the kind, like the types that they use.
Sure. But either way, if you guys get a chance, swing by, you could see what I'm talking about. And I really want to keep pushing us to, to get that wood chipper. So that's all I had for the.
Thank you. Amy? Just trying to mix it up.
We, I had our historical preservation meeting, plugging right along on getting the new plaques, which I'm really excited about. You guys are going to see those soon. They're super cool. And the quote that we got for them came in, I thought, very reasonable. So that's exciting, exciting stuff. They also have a couple of other fun little things on the horizon that are being talked about. Fall Fest is always a big focus for the history fair. So make sure you stop in. I'll start plugging away at that. And then livability commission, we had a presentation from, we've had a couple of presentations from organizations locally that handle a lot of things that our group was kind of talking about tackling. So now we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So it was really nice to hear from people who are already handling things that were concerns. A lot of conversations around like food insecurity and how do we make sure that our, you know, population is taken care of. So still having conversations around that, but more connecting with resources that are in place rather than trying to build new ones. So I think that is everything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a few things. We have a GGF meeting tomorrow, Mike. I'll be remote to that one, just so you know. I appreciate community comments tonight. Do we want to talk about any of those? So like the community garden thing, are we going to just wait for the document for support and then talk about it at a later meeting?
I'd like to get the information, get it distributed. And then at the next meeting, we can discuss if we want to put it on a workshop and how we want to proceed with that. I would like to get the information first to kind of read through it. So I have some sort of standing.
Look forward to that. And then the other comment with traffic study, I was not here for that. Do we, are we saving that for another meeting to just further discuss? Or is that taking, take care of administratively?
Yeah, we, we put traffic tubes to do counts. I don't have those results yet, but that's something we were, that had been asked for and we had worked on. And then once we have those, we take whatever that, that data is and make an operational decision on what needs to be done.
Or wait for that data and it'll be a little bit to analyze it.
I, they, they may be complete with it. I believe they are. I just haven't, I haven't had that meeting with them yet.
And I think in terms of the other comments that were made, sidewalk, a couple of different comments that need to be addressed in terms of the sidewalk. I saw you were taking notes at that in terms of the inconsistency of what's on one page versus the other page. And I'm sure we will look into making sure that program for sidewalk replacement assistance is there. And if it's not there, I'm sure it will get there. And if it is there, I'm sure it'll be communicated in terms of where it is.
Yeah, I can answer that now if you want. I mean, that's part of our budget process every year. You all have allocated the 100,000 that we went up from 30,000 a couple of years ago. We also made the change where we evaluate the sidewalks throughout the city. And instead, when we were just having people apply and for many years, we weren't getting the most needed sidewalks. We were, so what happened was there's a number of sidewalks throughout town. So we've been picking, we've been going through and engineering evaluates and public works, which sidewalks are in the worst condition. And then we, then we do a bid, which we're, I think we've already, or we're about to bid that out right now. And it's tied to some other crosswalk projects and all that. So it's not just sidewalks in that line item. And, and then we, we have a program because sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owner there. And that's, that's been that way for many decades in Fruta. And when it says the city funds, we, the definition of the funding is we have an 80/20 program. And since it's, the city will fund 80% and the resident only has to pay the 20%. But instead of doing those applications like we did for many years and weren't making enough progress, we identify, then we contact those property owners and we say, we're going to bid this out as one big project to get the best price. We'll manage everything. This is what the portion of the 20% would be for you. And that's what we've done for the last, including this year, might be the third year that we've been doing it that way. And it's been, we've, we've been making a huge headway. Now we're looking at with that funding, we should be have a pretty good rotation. I can't remember how many years. It's like within five to seven years that we're hitting everything. So.
Mike, how, how has that been received when you've come up to a homeowner and you go, hey buddy, gets what you get to spend 20% of this budget? I mean, nobody wants that knock on the door, but how's the experience been?
Yeah, it's actually, I, each year I've been checking in with engineering when, after those letters go out. And we've had a pretty good reception of it. I mean, sometimes people, it's not always natural that everybody's aware that the sidewalk is. I mean, it's, it's not hidden in any way, but it's not something you think about because it's not a maintenance thing that happens every year. But there, for the most part, we've had a really good reception of that because you see the total cost, you don't have to manage it yourself. You don't have to, we get bids, we, we come through and then we show like, we're taking care of the 80% and here's what the 20. And then there's ways to work out how that's paid. So, so overall, pretty positive.
So the payment's done on a one-on-one basis?
I mean, we pay the contractor and have all of it done. And then there's a billing of the 20%.
And then afterwards, I would get to grab a cup of coffee as well, if you're alright with you, to discuss the other item. So thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go in chronological order with my updates. So we're going to skip from Museum of Western Colorado to Fruta Arts and Culture Board and then back again. Enjoy the journey. All right. So Fruta Arts and Culture Board has their call for artists out for the Second Annual Heart of Fruta Sculpture Competition. And there's a $1,000 honorarium for all of the sculptors who entered this. Or who submit their work for the growing sculpture collection in Fruta. There's five pedestals this year. And the deadline for that is August 2. So if you know of a sculptor in the valley that wants to participate, we prefer local, but anyone can, can enter in their sculpture. And all of the details for that are on the city website. Secondarily, the museums of Western Colorado are having a big fundraiser on August 3. It's the Dinos on the Rocks fundraiser. And it's at Dinosaur Journey on August 3 from 6 to 9:30 PM. The proceeds from the event will benefit Dinosaur Journey, helping them to raise money for updated exhibits that will engage and educate visitors of all ages. And there's some, the new executive director has some amazing ideas. And so there's a lot of, a lot of fresh and interesting things that are happening there. So tickets are $70, VIP admission is $95. And there's going to be a cocktail competition and five, five distilleries have agreed to participate. All right. And then finally, actually third, thirdly, Fruta Arts and Culture, or I'm sorry, City of Fruta has issued a call for artists for the Mulberry Murals. So that deadline is August 5. If you know of a muralist that would like to participate, there's that. And then there's the Fruta Arts and Culture Board, a lot of updates, huh? On the Fruta 4th, Friday, August 23, there's going to be the Chalk Festival. So for, are we charging? No, it's free entry, no charge. So yeah, we're going to tape off squares along civic center, around civic center. And see, we're going to have students, amateurs and professional artists filling up the sidewalk with beautiful pastel artwork. And then there's going to be people's choice. For a dollar, you can vote for your favorite artists. For $10, you can vote for them 10 times, et cetera. That's, that's just in August. All of those things, just August. All right.
Stuff to look forward to.
That's right.
As clarification, $1,000 is for each artist that's selected.
That's selected. I'm so sorry. Yes. And the selection process includes a weighing in by the Arts and Culture Board members and also members of the community. So sponsors. Thank you, Janine.
Thank you for reaching out to have coffee because that comment is concerning to, thank you both for that. I just wanted to say that. And then a question about clear networks on the south side. How's that looking? Is it looking like anything? Question about, uh, clear networks on the south side. How's that looking? Is it looking like anything?
Yeah, no updates on that from Clear Networks. Currently they're still finishing out some of their pro, projects here and in other areas. Uh, the, the last discussion we had with them, we gave you all the update was. That they'd be looking at the fall at the earliest and through the winter. So I don't expect to hear anything and. Until closer to the, the winter timeframe.
Date we got from like their emailing saying, where are we at on the process? Um, they said probably starting until September. So.
Okay, all right.
Have, uh. Um, repairs been good in the community with clear networks of with things they've hit and we've found with irrigate.
Yeah, they've, they've actually been, uh, really responsive. We're just, we try to remind people if you have even just a little thing in your yard to definitely call. Because they'll come, they'll have someone come out to, you know, put sod in or fix, uh, you know, fix whatever. But, um, we've had a lot of good feedback for those that have called in. They've, they've come back. And if I can, I just back to James's question earlier, um, we do have a hardship program. I don't know all the criteria off the top of my head. But when people can't pay for the twenty percent, we do have a hardship program that, uh, people can go through that sometime, that sometimes is even waived. At that point in time.
You know what the process is for that? Is that during those one-on-one discussions that gets brought up? Um, is there something on the website?
Yeah, that's, that's when, when they get those letters and have, it's very similar to, we have a hardship program for our utility bills. And so we make sure that they're aware of that if they're not able to. Yeah.
And I, I'm not, none of, I'm on a board and they're not meeting in the summer. So I don't have any, um, anything to. Say about that right now, but I did want to say, and separate from when we were doing C M L updates, James and I went to a session. Um, about engaging youth and, uh, one of the things that we came away with. That seemed like an interesting idea that I thought we might want to ponder and see if we were interested is, um, to have youth on all of the. All, all of the boards and commissions and you know, like if the youth council wanted to. Designate some of their, um, kit students to, on some other boards. Just to get, to make sure that we're being well-rounded in viewpoints, um, on all areas. So they did that. It's very successful. There's other great things that. Um, I came away with, I think James came away with from that session that we can talk about later, but I did want to bring that.
Actually something we've been discussing on livability.
Okay.
Yeah, the last two times, like how to get, so I, I love that idea.
And thanks for bringing that up because we did, you and I were pretty into that and I forgot all about that. Um. There were some of the kids that had gone through the boards and stuff and had now worked for the city.
Exactly. Yeah, it's super cool.
Yeah, it was really cool.
Fruta Chambers trying to work on that as well, the youth on board position.
I just had one, uh, board meeting tourism advisory council and I had to leave early. I don't know if there was anything that was discussed that needs to be brought up that Shannon was there. While I was not there, is there anything else from that that?
Um, we postponed, we, so we had a few people absent at our last meeting. Um, so the, a couple of meetings ago, council asked, um. Rich and staff to engage the tourism board, just to see how things are going, um, with our current consultant. So we had three members out and then. Rich had to step out. So I think we all decided it'd be best to have everyone involved in that conversation. So we'll be discussing it next week.
Although I've been very busy with C stuff and actually no board meetings. Um, did have a meeting with Mike Ritter with the incubator over the weekend, um, where I, they have their new annual report. Uh, I'll see if I can get copies of it. I don't know if you've seen it. It's the first time I've ever had a document from the incubator that I, I could read and be like, okay. Now I understand the breadth of the programming that you do. So it was very well done and if I can't get more copies.
Book like it was last year? Like we got that book last year.
Yeah, it, this was laid out differently. It's, yeah, it's actually bigger than last year, but it outlay, it doesn't outline of every program. I thought it was really well done. So if we can't get more copies of it, I will share it. It's definitely worth going through. To get an understanding of the depth and breadth of everything that they do. Um, as always, thank you for everybody, staff and everybody for, uh, all the work on the ice cream social at last Thursday's concert. Uh, the ice cream was definitely a nice break to eat. Um, and that's always a lot of fun. Um, I have a chamber meeting tomorrow morning at seven A M. Or we have a. Chamber meeting at seven A M. Tomorrow, uh, I'm sure the M O U and festivals will be a topic of discussion. So I'll bring that back. And then, and lastly, uh, doing it, some research, uh, getting ready for the board retreat. I went through and spent a lot of time and looked through probably ten or twelve other municipal budgets. Uh, hats off, like truly to, sometimes you don't always.
Look at that smile.
Well, sometimes you don't appreciate what we have until you start to look at other communities' budgets. Very nicely done. Let's, so thank you. I didn't appreciate it for everything until I took a look at others. So that's all I have. Um, anybody have anything else before we move into our last item, which is executive session? All right. So. So I, it's, I guess I have to read this.
No, Mr. Mayor, just whoever makes the motion.
Move, make a motion to move.
Mayor, I moved to convene in an executive session for the purpose of determining position relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing. Developing strategy for negotiations and instructions, nego, and instructing negotiations pursuant to C R S section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, E. With the city's realtor with regard to the city's potential purchase of real estate property, uh, pursuant to C R S section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, A.
If I first or second?
Councillor Purser?
Yes.
Councillor Parish?
Yes.
Councillor Stolarczyk? Councillor Miller?
Affirmative.
Councillor, Councillor Williams and Councillor Hansi. Motion passes six, zero.
Right. With that, we're going to, uh, do you guys want to take a two-minute break?